So we're gonna go ahead and start with the prayer. The prayer is on the screen here, but it's also on your handouts. This is the campaign prayer. So pray with me, please. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving Father, Source of all creation, you are mighty and have done great things for us. May we always be grateful for all you accomplish, as together we grow. Risen Son, Redeemer of all creation, you gave your life for us in total and unconditional love. May we always surrender ourselves to you, as together we grow. Holy Spirit, Sanctifier of all creation, you enlighten our minds with the gifts and your fruits. May we always be open to your guidance, as together we grow. Trying God, you filled our patron, your priest and martyr, St. Maximilian Kolbe, with great love and devotion to Mary Immaculate. We seek her intercession, as we place our campaign efforts before you, our one God, faithful and merciful forever and ever, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Again, thank you for being here. Before we jump in, I would like to take the time to introduce the panel up here. We have Tammy Silvestri on the end. She was one of the co-chairs for the Campaign Pledge Drive, the Campaign Pledge Committee. Then we have Jim Lopiti, who was the Chair of the Steering Committee for the campaign. And then we have John Monroe. He's the Chair of our Finance Council. Father Jim Reilly. Just to let you know, if you may have lots of questions, but we would very much appreciate it if you hold your questions until the end. So if you, you know, maybe jot questions down as we go through, because we have a lot to get through, and we don't want to be here too long this evening, because we have a lot to share with you. We want to take your questions, so if we can just hold those till the end. So basically, this evening is about updating the campaign. You know, when I arrived here, well, even before I arrived here, Father Jeff had shared with me about the campaign and some of the aspects of it, but obviously not the details, you know? I was just here for a tour. And then, after I got here, I wanted to dig into the campaign to see, okay, what's this all about? Where did it come from? What are the needs of the parish? And those sorts of things. And that's why, I mean, that's what, essentially, it's one of the things I've been doing since July, meeting with lots and lots of people who had been involved with the campaign and getting their advice and their help. So basically, I would like to share what I've learned with you, to update you on perhaps maybe things you didn't know about where the campaign was and how the campaign developed, because I think there's been some confusion on some points. So we're trying this evening, one of the main goals is to clarify what the campaign is trying to accomplish. We also want to share with you where the campaign stands right now, and then our hope for the direction of the campaign, where we'd like to go moving forward. And so, basically, this evening, different panelists will come and share different expertise on different aspects of the campaign. So first of all, Tammy's going to give us some background on the campaign in collaboration with the Archdiocese and Campaign.
Hi, everybody. Thanks again for coming. We weren't quite sure how many people were gonna come, and I win, because I guessed the most. I win nothing, but I still won. So, basically, in about 2000 or 2014, the Archdiocese decided to embark on a capital campaign with the idea of raising about $130 million for the diocese to be dispersed to different organizations and charities. It was called One Faith, One Hope, One Love. It was a five-year campaign, and the four areas that it was hoping to raise money for were the support of the vocations to the priesthood. And that was a, had a number of parts to it. One was to expand the Atheneum. I don't know if you're aware, but currently, our Atheneum is at capacity. There is not room for more seminarians to be there, and so they wanted to expand that to allow for more seminarians to, for more vocations. And then, the other, another part of that was, they wanted to fund a permanent chair. So they wanted to bring in another professor to expand the educational opportunities also for our seminarians. And the third part of that was to replenish the fund for retired priests. As you know, we have a lot more priests retiring than are being ordained and working in ministry. And so that fund got depleted over the course of time, and they wanted to replenish it. The second area was Catholic charities. As you know, our Catholic Ministries Appeal gives them their day-to-day operating funds, but with some of the things going on in our world and in our culture right now, they wanted to expand some of their programs to, for, to meet the needs that were now present. And so money was going to go there. The largest portion of the money was going to go to Catholic schools, mainly tuition assistance. And, but the second part would be that a lot of the current buildings for some of our Catholic schools are very rundown, and so money was going to go for that. And then the last part of it was going to be additional revenue for parishes. Each parish in the diocese was required to participate, and it was the first capital campaign in the Archdiocese in about 50 years. I think I was told that the last time they did a capital campaign, they built Moeller High School, is what I, I think I was told. Parishes were given two options in areas. The first one was when to participate. They, at any point over the course of like two or three years, whatever worked best for the financial schedule and the, whatever schedule of the parish, we could kind of choose within some guidelines when we wanted to participate. The second one was how we wanted to participate, and that's the part that's, I think, really pertinent to this gathering here. The first one was, we could just do, participate in the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign. And to do that, we would go out, we would still have the Campaign Committee, the Pledge Drive Committee, would go out, speak to our parishioners still. We were given a set goal, and our parish would receive 20% up to that goal. So there was no, like, minimum required that we were sent, that we had to give to the parish. It was, whatever we collected, we were able to keep 20%. The second way we could participate was a dual campaign, in which we still participated in the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign, but we could partner that with a capital campaign for our own parish. And there were a couple of benefits to that. First of all, there was a minimum that we needed to raise that was sent to the Archdiocese. Our goal was $1,716,000. So we had to raise that before any money came back to the parish. Let's see. And then anything over and above that, we got to keep, okay? In order to administer the One Faith, One Hope, One Love, and these, and any parish who decided to do the dual campaign, the Archdiocese set up a 501(c)(3) organization called the Catholic Community Foundation, and their job was to administer all of the funds collected and dispersed from that campaign. The reason that St. Max chose the dual campaign, there were a number of benefits to doing it that way. Over the course of a number of years, parishioners had come to Father Terry, Father Jeff, Father Porter still had a list of things that he wanted, that he would have liked to have seen on our campus, and said things like, "We need an upgraded kitchen for the fish fry. We need more meeting space. We need a bigger gathering space," because our ministries wanted to put out tables in order to recruit new members to their ministries. Some of our little ones, like our Consolidated School and American Heritage Girls, and, gosh, I don't know what their name is anymore, but the Women's Group, they wanted to have bake sales and things like that, and there really wasn't room in the gathering space to do too much, and so we had to really limit what everybody was allowed to do. A large number of you said, "We want to pay off the debt. We want to be debt-free." And so, knowing that there were those needs and desires here in the parish, there was always the thought that at some point, we would embark on a capital campaign. When the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign came about, we thought that this would be a perfect opportunity, because it would allow us to ask for money one time. If we would have gone with just the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign, that's a five-year commitment, after the course of the five years, all of those needs, especially when you factor in the growth in Liberty Township in West Chester, we guessed that at the course of five years, all of those needs that had been addressed over the course of years would even be greater. We would have even less room in the gathering space. There would be even a greater need for meeting room. So we thought it would be better to ask one time, rather than finish the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign, and then a couple of years later, come back and ask all of you to donate again. There were some other benefits to doing a dual campaign. The services of a consultant, and almost every parish uses a consultant when they're doing a fundraising campaign like this, the services were greatly, those, the costs, were greatly reduced, because we were using the service that the Archdiocese was using. And so those funds were greatly reduced. Another savings was that the Catholic Community Foundation was going to be responsible for the administration, the collection, and the dispersment of all of the funds that were collected, which meant that if we had done our own campaign, the staff at St. Max would have been responsible for that. They would have had to follow up with people who maybe had not made a payment. They would have had to follow up with every donor to find out how they wanted to pay, and that kind of a thing. And so that would have added a lot to their job, and if we felt the need, we may have even had to hire someone in order to handle that part of the campaign. The biggest part, though, to me, the part that I thought was most compelling, was that, as some of you may know, all of our collections and a lot of our fundraising is, there is a 10, about 10%, 9-10% assessment on everything we collect. If we would have done our own campaign, there would have been the 10%-ish, 9-10% assessment. By partnering with the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign, that assessment was waived. So every penny that we collected over and above the 1.716 was brought back to, was brought back to the parish. So if you look over there at our beautiful sign, this was partnering. So our, the goal, the goal to do all the things we wanted to do was $5.45 million. If we, if we take out the 1.7, which we would have, roughly, we would have had to collect for the first campaign, and I'm using rough numbers, not exact, that left about $3.7 million for that building campaign. If you take 10% of that, that's $370,000 that would have gone to the Archdiocese and not to us. So that, I thought that was a very compelling reason in and of itself, to do the dual campaign. Now, of course, the process was a little more complicated than that. There was a lot of thought, and study, and discussion, and surveys, and meetings with people that went into the, to making this decision, but for the sake of brevity and not keeping you here until 10 o'clock tonight, I summarized it into basics. So Father Jim is going to now cover some of those basics, so that you can kind of get an idea of how all of those things came about.
So as Tammy said, that this was a dual campaign in collaboration with the Archdiocese and Campaign. So how did this unfold here at St. Max? So initially, this internal survey was done primarily amongst the pastoral team, the, all of the councils and parish commissions, just basically saying, you know, all those needs that Tammy had been talking about, that had been floating around for decades, you know, what is the most significant? Where, how do we rank these? And so the team went ahead and took care of those, ranked theirs, and then this was taken, a consulting firm was brought in in January 2016, CCS, a fundraising consulting firm, and they did a survey, a study, seeking a broader number of parishioners, their opinion on these, and sort of ranking the needs of the parish and so forth, getting their input for this proposed expansion or renovation of parish facilities. So this was all done to say, okay, how are we gonna structure this campaign, and how do we start, and where do we move after that, and so forth? So it was decided then, this was the results of the study that came back. It said, "All interviewed parishioners identified benefits of the proposed plan. Most indicated the elimination of the debt, expansion of the gathering space, addition of a larger multipurpose meeting room, and expansion and upgrade of the kitchen, as the most significant benefits." So primarily, that's where the structure for how the campaign, the phases of the campaign, were decided. Now, I will say, you may be thinking, there's something missing from up here, and that would be the day chapel. I'll get to that in just one minute. So this was, then, how the original plan ended up. So this is how it ended up, and this is what was presented to the parish. Fulfill our parish obligation to the Archdiocese and Campaign, this was Tammy has been speaking of. Eliminate the parish debt. Build a community room, this fellowship room area with serving area for easier and more frequent fellowship opportunities. Add a day chapel to be located near the hospitality room. Relocate the main entrance to the north window of the atrium, and that would mean that the Rachel weeping for her children statue would have to be moved to a dedicated and prominent location. Any money that, and this would be $3.5 million, any money raised above that would be set aside for future projects, for example, the kitchen expansion and classrooms down on this end of the complex. So, where did the chapel idea come from? You can actually find parish plans dated back in the late '90s that talk about the desire for a day chapel here at St. Max. So this was, even back then, there was this long-term vision for the parish to have a day chapel. And to the best of my ability, what I understand, how this sort of re, kind of entered into this campaign in those phases, is that it was known that we were going to be adding the fellowship area, and this, there should be, well, right with that, thank you. So we're gonna, they have that fellowship area, and then that large meeting room area, which would be right next to it. And so it was decided then, that should be the day chapel, all right? That was what was decided, because this, the day chapel had long been a part of sort of the vision for the parish. So if you were wondering where that came from, because it didn't show up in those surveys and the studies as a need that was ranking high on anyone's radar, but it was part of the long-term vision for St. Max, and has been since the early, you know, mid-'90s. So that's how this, the original plan unfolded, and that was what was brought forward to the parish. And so this is what, and this would have been done then in several phases. So the very first goal was to eliminate, eliminate the debt, and then Phase 1 would be basically the campaign that we're going through right now, okay? And that included the elimination of the debt. So it's the addition of this gathering space and chapel slash large multipurpose room. So what we'd like to do now, then, is to show the financial side of things, and so John's gonna come up and share with you the financial picture for all of this.
So from the very beginning, the combined campaign goal was comprised of the following items. $1,716 for One Faith, One Hope, One Love. And as indicated, that was six payments to the Archdiocese at $286,000 each. And then the St. Max part of the campaign was debt repayment of $500,000, and then a Phase 1 construction project of $1,284, for the combined goal of $3,505,000. And as of October 31st of 2018, we have pledges of $3,479,324, or 99.4% of our goal. Our collections and payments to date that we've received, the collections from pledges paid, is $1,803,304. From that, we have paid the Archdiocese and Campaign $1,128,242. We paid debt off and used $468,254 of the Together We Grow funds. And then there was $1,000 in one of the payments we had received from the Archdiocese that went into a savings account. So our current balance, as of today, basically, that's available for payment to the Archdiocese in January, is $205,808. And remember, those payments are $286,000 each. Other items of interest from a financial standpoint, we still owe the Archdiocese The first bullet under that, $15,758, that's left over from July. We did not collect enough pledges to meet our minimum payment to the Archdiocese of And then finally, the total amount available to St. Max for Phase 1 construction, if we collect 100% of the pledges, is $1,295,700. I will say at this point, of the 614 people and families that pledged, there are only 12 families, 12 pledges, that have not been honored at all, which I think is a phenomenal number. So people are being faithful to making their pledge payments. What have we accomplished so far? Well, we've been able to obtain 99.4% of our goal in pledges. As of February 2018, debt was paid off completely. We have paid $1,128,242 to the Archdiocese toward the $1,716,000. And as of October 31st, 52% of the pledges have been fulfilled. So considering that we really didn't get into the collection process until probably late 2016, early 2017, I think being halfway through it by now is, is a good thing.
So now the pressing question, where do we go from here? This is where we enter into some of the confusion that has happened as this campaign unfolded, and it was due to miscommunication on the part of the Archdiocese, quite honestly. And that is that the campaign, as it started here in the parish, was under, had used a document to move forward with the campaign, an Archdiocese and document, that stated one thing, but Archdiocese and policy had changed about 10 years ago on this same subject, and that was basically, how much money in the bank does a parish have to have in order to break ground, to actually start construction? The parish was under the impression that it was something else. The actual policy of the Archdiocese is that 50% of the estimated budget of the project has to be in hand for the parish. So as you recall, it's, the budget for us for this construction project, it's one point, a little more than $1.2 million. So do your math, we need $600,000 in the bank to be able to start the constructions, 1.284. So that's how much is actually needed to break ground. Now, I want to emphasize here that, yes, we had a little shortfall on some pledges there, but as John emphasized, only 12 donors have failed to meet their pledges at all. So we have 602 of our donors, and that's, that's the total out of the entire parish. 614 households or individuals are the ones who have pledged for this campaign, okay? And they're the ones that have gotten this, to this 99.4% of our goal, as far as pledges. And so what we're talking about here, then, is, what I wanted to emphasize, is that, you know, we're doing fine. We're doing well. We just have some ways to go. It's just, as you can see, it takes a significant number to actually get the project going. And this, I don't need to get into that, we can maybe in the question and answer, if you have more questions about this, we can talk about more of the why behind all this, why the Archdiocese and policy is what it is. But I just, that needs to be clear, all right? Because I know some people have thought, well, you know, I've been pledging for over a year, and my money's gone into this, this campaign, and I haven't seen a thing. Well, as this glass screen showed, we've done a lot, actually. I mean, paying off the debt, that's fantastic. That is a great thing. And then we've put, we've paid quite a significant amount towards our, what we owe to the Archdiocese for the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign. So we're on the right track, so that just, that needs to be emphasized. All right? And now Jim is going to help us look a little bit more closely about how this is gonna unfold
My name is Jim Lopiti. About early 2017, Father Jeff approached me and said, hey, he knew, he knew I was in the construction business, and he said, he asked me to, to be on this campaign, and he asked me to Chair the campaign, or the Chair of the Steering Committee for the building. So I was very excited about it, and, and I jumped right in. So we put together a Steering Committee of about 10 folks, diverse backgrounds, and, you know, all different, you know, facets and backgrounds that you need to have a successful construction team. So, you know, this was early 2017. We met for about a year, planning and things like that, and, and made a lot of good progress. As folks know, they're in the business, or if you, if you're not, you can imagine, doing a construction project takes a lot of planning. You usually plan for longer than you, than you actually build, believe it or not, so. But some of the first things I asked Father Jeff, I think at first meeting, "Do you have any money?" You know? Because you need money, like, on day one, to build anything, right? So he said, "Well, let me show you the campaign. Do you have consensus on everything that we're building? We've got, we've got all these different ideas and programs and things like that." So it takes a lot of information gathering at the beginning with, whether it's your client, or, you know, the pastor of your church. So we went through, did a lot of information gathering, and came to find out, the finances on this is extremely complicated. So they, and that's been the most challenging part, the actual building itself. I think we've got a lot of good ideas and a good team put together, but the finances around it, so if you think about it, and I like to kind of start high level with it, it, there's, this whole pie, this $3.5 million pie is broken up into three sections, as you guys heard, right? The 1.7 million to the Archdiocese, $500,000 for, for debt reduction, and then $1.2 million for construction. So then you take that down, and not only do you need a budget with construction, but you need cash flow, like, you need money on day one, right? So, and you gotta, you gotta have some design development before you can actually budget it, and know what it costs. See, it's kind of like a chicken or the egg thing, you know? I've got this amount of money, and I kind of want to do this, but you need some design development before you know how much it costs. You see what I'm saying, right? So, so we're going through, and these are kind of the, a lot of the main topics around our Steering Committee meetings. And, and so we get, and when we start to understand more about how the money comes in, it becomes even more complex. So every six months, we, we get one, a check in, right? And it's, the first, the first obligation of the campaign is the 1.716. And it's the first, the first obligation of the campaign is the 1.716 million to the Archdiocese. So let's say a first check came in, and it was, it was $300,000, right? And these are for six months, and these are about what these checks have been, right? So 286,000 of it goes to the Archdiocese, and we get a check for $14,000. So that's the way it works. And then you only have cash flow every six months, so it's two days a year that you have cash flow into a construction project. So the first, the first, basically, three, or, I'll say the first two and a half payments, let's say, went straight towards, they were large payments, and they went straight towards paying off the debt. If you think, so three payments equals 18 months, right? Because you're only getting paid every six months. So three payments equals 18 months, and now let's fast forward, and we're in the middle of, you know, 2018. And so then you can start to accrue some money for the construction project, but we're still on this six-month cycle. So, long story short, the finances are extremely complicated for a project the size, but because of the different facets of it, and how it's being managed and things like that. And then, as Father Jim mentioned, some misunderstanding as to whether we could take a short-term loan to bridge. The loan wasn't to pay for, because you saw, we net out at zero, right? The idea was to build to a budget of 1.2 million. The actual campaign is a five-year redemption on your pledges. So if the, if, if the Archdiocese takes 1.716 million in the three years over six payments, two times a year, and you get money in the complete, the last dollar that comes in that you need, takes five years to come in, and you have a construction project that needs to start somewhere in between, that's, let's say, eight months of design and permitting and programming, and a year to build, and that happens before the five months is up, you know that you need a bridge to fund the construction. That bridge is a short-term loan. So, so the idea was to take a short-term loan with a payoff at the end of the five-year redemption, and at the same time make these six-month payments, which we've made very good progress at the, you know, the first two years of that, and pay off the debt. And we kind of had a curveball, right? So, hey, you can't take a loan until you have 50% in hand. In order to have 50% in hand, where you only get paid every six months, even if you could have it on the first, you know, month two, you're still six months out, and then you don't know. These are promises, right? These are promises. So it's become very challenging when I, so I'll rephrase that, when I said, first question I asked Father Jeff, hey, do you have any money? Have, yeah, a promise for money, and these, you know what I mean? So a promise is not money in hand, so that's, so if anybody wants to ask a question, why haven't you broke ground? Because there's, we don't have the money in hand right now. And so we have a lot of ideas moving forward, and we've kind of, we've kind of got over the hump of, you know, we paid down the debt first, and we've made significant progress at the Archdiocese. And, you know, we have, you know, and Father Jim is here, and we, and we're kind of taking another look at it, what are our priorities? What were the actual stated priorities before Father Jeff, or Father Jim alluded that, that the day chapel was not one of them? So if that's not one, if that was not a primary priority, what do you do moving forward? So, I should have started with this, but I have the most challenging part of this presentation. What do we do moving forward? So, so, yeah, let's put the image up. Okay, so, and I'll take that, and the pointer. Thank you. So as you know, and this is, this, this was Phase One, so everybody recognizes this, and there's three basic components to it. It's this right here, believe it or not, that's about 800 square foot of vestibule. And this vestibule has to be moved, because, you know, this is the current front door, so you would have to establish that first, so that you could, you know, build this. So it involves, this is one component, this would get built first, but even before then, if you're looking at these two as the same, we have to move the Rachel statue. This is a proposed location for it. And then that would enable you to build this, to construct this. So the, and this is built up of two components, you know, a fellowship room, and these are kind of support areas that go along with a fellowship room. This happens to be a little kitchenette, kind of a catering kitchen. And then, you know, building code mandates some bathrooms and circulation, and there's some storage, because we need that. And then, and then, of course, the day chapel. This was a 170-person-capacity day chapel. So where do we go from here? And so the first two priorities were, that were outlined from all these data analytics that were performed in 2016, was a fellowship room and more multipurpose slash classroom slash, you know, stuff that's down here on this side of the campus. So the idea is, you know, taking another look at this, and knowing that, you know, every day that we are not breaking ground, every day that, you know, construction costs a little more, so we're really, and we're trying to be conservative with those things. So, and we've gone to the Archdiocese and asked for, you know, some concessions to help us kind of jumpstart the project, and those conversations are going really well. Because as I mentioned, it's not a fact that we don't have the pledges coming in, it's kind of a, right now, it's, we're at a cash flow issue that we have some good ideas to solve. But, so that said, we're also trying to see if we can, you know, economize a few things, perhaps make this a little smaller, and perhaps repurpose this chapel area for some of the multipurpose rooms, things like that. So those are some of the current ideas that we're kicking around. And I spent most of my time talking about what we did last year, and kind of, I want to kind of provide an overall idea, because if I was sitting in the room, the first question that I would ask is, why haven't you done it? Why haven't you broke ground? You know, so it's very important to know that the finances, although there's a lot of benefits, as Tammy mentioned, are complicated, but yet they are successful, because, you know, we've achieved the campaign, there is still money coming in, we've paid down the debt, all those really good things. And, and, you know, it's important then to take a look at where you are and live within our means, and kind of, as best we can, restructure for that. So I'm not showing you an image of what the next, of what it could be, if it's not exactly this, knowing that we're not, there's not a day chapel. But as we sit here today, that hasn't been programmed yet, so we're now, we're kind of back to the idea, you know, generating some ideas.
So just to clarify, just to make sure that it's, what we're looking at then is trying to accommodate, so that with the budget that we have, given the timeframe that we have, how can we stay within our budget and then meet the needs of the parish? All right? That's, so what we're doing is we're simply saying, you know, a day chapel has a whole lot of extra costs, an altar, the chairs, the furnishings, the ambo. And I don't know if you've picked up on this, I've told, if I'm going to do a chapel, it's going to be done right, and it's going to cost some money. So, you know, I mean, it's going to be beautiful, because we wanted to make it beautiful, because it deserves to be beautiful. So what we're, and I've talked with the Archbishop about this, and so what we can do is simply create that space as a template for possibly down the line, if we have the money to make it a day, or if we think that there's a real need. I will tell you, and this is my personal opinion, I don't see a need for a day chapel here. That's my personal opinion, but... So that, I'm just, you know, that's part, so, but if another pastor comes along, or if the needs of the parish change, we have the option. You know, I was talking with the Archbishop, and he talked about other parishes, that instead of creating some finished project, they have within their budget, they create simply the shell, and then down the line, add to it. And other parishes have done that. I know St. Columban, for example, when they built their new church, the entire basement area was left untouched. It was basically, you know, cinder block walls and a concrete floor. If you go there now, it's beautiful space, carpeting and all these different other rooms and stuff, but they built it, they met the needs of their budget, and later on, then they were able to kind of do what they really wanted to do with the space. So that's, that's kind of a general idea of where we're going. The good news is that having this conversation with the Archbishop, and I want to try to go back to one of the, oh, this'll do. Nope, one more. Well, I'll do this one first. Okay, so as we've been talking about, we have these six-month payments that we give to the Archdiocese that come in about $286,000. That's our goal, right? That's how, what we pay to them. Anything we collect above that comes back to us. So I called the Archbishop, and I was like, we need to kickstart this, we need some help. Can we defer one of our payments? In other words, come January 1st, can the monies that we've collected between July 1st, 2018, and December 31st, 2018, instead of going to the Archdiocese, can we keep that and then get moving on the exact design phase? So that when we reach that 50% mark, we are ready to go, and we don't have to have that six-to-eight-month time period for a design phase. So right now, our payments to the, are the pledges made in this time period are $205,808. So as of Friday afternoon, the Archbishop said, okay, so we get that, that's going to come straight to us. We're deferring one of those six-month periods back, especially if we're pushing it back a year. So we will get that, and anything else we collect between now and December 31st. So make some payments between now and December 31st, because we get it all. So, you know, even if you're planning on doing it later, if you're one of the people who participate in the campaign, get it in, because it comes straight to us, and the more we get, the closer we are to that 50% threshold, which would be very exciting. Otherwise, we are looking at conceivably, what's the outside, four years before completion of the project? I mean, really, if, at the rate that we go with the payments coming in, and everybody's doing what they're pledged to do, it's just going to take some time. Okay? Yes?
It's worth mentioning that with your, with this concession... So the cash flow, as you mentioned, if we were to proceed the way they had shown, and, you know, Father Jim would not have been able to get this, I guess, concession from the Archdiocese on Friday, it would have been, the math says it would have been a lot further down the road, if we still had momentum by that point in time, which is, you know, debatable. But with this, you know, we've ran a new financial plan just as of this morning, and it literally moves everything up, like, two years. And it puts us right on track. It is a significant win, and it's just that, it's a little tiny, that getting some money in early on enables the design phase to go, and then the financial plan says that, right when that is done, it falls right in line, we're right at our 50% threshold, and we just continue. So essentially, if you were to hit the go button today, that's what Friday was. So we're really on a regular path for construction moving forward as of Friday, whereas the alternative is, would be, you know, significantly longer. And as Father Jim mentioned, the more money you have in, the more that 50% date, which is a contractual issue with the Archdiocese, the earlier that ticks up, the earlier we can even start, we can even shave a little bit. It's very important.
Okay, so that covers on our end what we wanted to share. So now Sarah's got a microphone, we're recording this, so we want to make sure that people know their questions. So anybody that has a question, if you kind of raise your hand, and, or would it be easier, Sarah, if you just sort of stood and they came to you? Maybe that would be easier. Or, well, she's going to pass it around, so. Can we turn the lights back up, please, for now?
My question, so I was on pastoral council when all this was happening, and I know that we raise these funds as designated funds, and the understanding is they have to be used for precisely what they were collected for. Would changing a chapel to a multipurpose room create problems with that designated funds situation?
I asked the Archbishop and lots of people downtown that question. And essentially, we do have to allow the option, because they're designated funds, for any individual who was gave specifically because of the day chapel. If they decide that that's, that they don't support this campaign because the day chapel's not there, then we have to return their funds. We have to return that, that's their right, because it was designated, the sacred intent of the donor. So that is that option. We're hoping that that won't be an issue, but that's what the Archbishop said, and David Kissel at the Archdiocese had the same answer.
How much do we have in our account here at St. Max that we've gotten back from the
Right now, we have that $1,000 in savings. That's it. We will get every dollar between now and the end of December, actually, from July 1st through the end of December, that will go into a restricted account. But as of now, all of our money's been used to pay off debt, and then there was the $1,000 extra in one of the payments, and that went right into the savings account.
Father, how much of the 1.284, if we don't build the day chapel, how much is that going to save us?
We're not sure about that, because we haven't been able to enter into that specific design phase yet. But I mean, and I don't know if, I've never done one of these before, but, you know, so how much an altar, an ambo, candles, chairs, all the rest of that could save us? I can't give that answer, sorry.
Father, I was looking at the bulletin, and I noticed that we're quite a bit below our budget. And I'm wondering if this continues, what we're going to be able to do to meet our operational needs, instead of spending all our time doing this capital campaign?
Very good question. I would say that one of the things, you know, we can't just quit the campaign, you know, I mean, we have, this is from the Archdiocese, the One Faith, One Hope, One Love, we have to fulfill that, just like every parish has. So in terms of that, I believe, are we 82,000? Is that right, Ruth? 82,000 below our budget, basically, in terms of collections. Obviously, it's a very real concern for us, but we face this dilemma of, you know, people have made these pledges, they've met these pledges, and the campaign is moving. Now, it may become the situation where we just have to, you know, slow down, but the problem is, it comes back to the intent of the donor, that if the money comes in for the campaign, we can't take that money and use it to, for other things. We just can't do it. So it's, we're really, it's kind of locked, as far as I can understand, it's two completely different things budgetarily. So, you know, we really can't touch the campaign money just to keep the lights on, you know,
Father and panel, 600 families jumped in on the first campaign pledge drive, correct? Tammy?
That is correct.
Okay. With the restructuring of what it possibly would look like, has it been considered that we maybe go with another round of campaign fund drive?
Yes. I mean, a lot of things have been put forward. Some of it, for example, one of the things, when the campaign ended in, like, September of 2016, I mean, that's when we stopped going, reaching out to parishioners, and actually asking them for money. But since that time, every new parishioner, and actually, probably six months prior to the end of the campaign, every new parishioner that has moved into this has not been approached. So that is, that is one thing we're looking at. What does that look like? How are we going to do it? Do we do it with personal visits again? Do we do it with phone calls? Do we do it with a letter? You know, all of those things need to be approached. Um, you know, we've talked about, you know, even things like in order to, if there's any shortfall, we've thought, like, well, then we can ask all 600 and however many donors, "Would you be willing to extend your donate, you know, pledges for one year?" You know, all of those things are kind of in the mix. We just haven't, until we know what it is we're looking at, and how much it's going to cost, we don't really know. But definitely, reaching out to new parishioners is definitely something we're going to work
Thank you. I was wondering about the cost of the construction. If that had, how long ago was that determined? Because that's gonna be different today than when it was determined. So when was that number?
It was, it was, it was a rough estimate. I mean, we never went out and got, like, an architect to do anything. So that was 2016, and Jim's gonna tell you, but yes, every day, every year, we, we wait, the price goes up.
Yeah, uh, market escalation's in the area, probably 6% year over year. Uh, so, you know, timing's important, um, and it is that chicken or the egg thing I was talking about earlier. It's really hard to tell exactly how much a project like this costs until there's some design development. And, uh, until Friday, we really haven't been enabled to contract with a designer. So, um, so that's, that's the dilemma. But yes, you're right on track, uh, every day, it costs a little bit more.
It wasn't presented that the Archdiocese gets all their money first before we do anything. It was presented that it was a half-and-half thing, and it was a five-year thing. Now, the Archdiocese, based on what you guys are saying, uh, they get everything first within the first three years. And that's what's pushing this whole project completely back, because we were told the building would be starting within a couple years after the pledges.
Uh, yeah, and that, that's what we were operating on. We knew that we were gonna have to pledge, we knew we were gonna have to pay the Archdiocese, but we were under the impression that it was going to be, um, like, we were gonna get to pay them over the entire five years. When they actually worked it out, and this was all just talk, this was, there was never anything in writing saying this was gonna happen, and, you know, you were gonna pay this much, and you were gonna get this much. We were just told that they were going to work with us, so that we would get some, and they would get some. And we were the, under the impression that it would be happening under the, over the entire five years, and that it would be a little more equitable. Um, when it actually worked out, it did not work out that way.
Yeah, kind of building on what Jerry was saying before, um, however this shakes out, it sounds like the operational costs are gonna increase by X amount of percent. And with collections being down, it sounds like we're already challenged to meet the current operating budget. So, assuming we do whatever for this expansion project, how do we account for the additional operational expenses? And what's the risk of going in debt again, because we can't pay our bills?
Well, I think that, as I said before, this, it's two different things, you know, the campaign and then just our, I think, I think this is something that we just have to face, not just here, but I've talked to lots of other priests, and people aren't giving right now. People are not giving money to the church, uh, you know, it's quite possible, most likely, because of all the scandals and things. And that's why in my homily a few weeks ago, I was trying to emphasize that, you know, 90% of your money stays here in the parish, you know, in, when, in the, from the collection. It's just that 10% that goes to support Archdiocese and programs. So, just basically, to just remind people that we need their help, we need their support. I can tell you that, you know, that, that sadly, apparently, my words aren't as powerful as I had hoped they'd be, because it didn't make much difference, you know? So, we saw kind of a little uptick for, like, the next week, and then back down again. So, I, I guess, you know, the question is, I have the same question. I don't know how to communicate to people how important it is that their money is necessary just to do the basic things that we do here. You know, the, the, one of the things that St. Max's strives for is this total stewardship idea, right? This, this idea that your money goes to provide for all of these programs, and so that's why so many of these programs and all the materials offered are free. And they're based in, it's, you know, they're freewheel donations if you would like to cover the cost of them. So like, the book used in a workshop, things like that. Uh, natural family planning class for couples preparing to get married, that costs $135, but St. Max's offers those for free, because that's what the parish decided, I don't know how many years ago, this total stewardship approach, because it all comes from the collection. So there are some ways that we might have to say, "Well, we're not gonna be able to do those things anymore. We're gonna have to start charging for those classes. We're gonna have to start raising the cost for, for, you know, whatever, the different classes and workshops and things." I don't want to do that, because I think it's a, it's a wonderful idea. And that's actually, if you look at the history of the, the church in this country, especially when you look at the support of Catholic schools from Catholic parishes, even during the Great Depression, there was an explosion of schools in this country. Parishes building schools in the, in the Great Depression, you know, because people wanted to support the works of the church. There, I think, is the broader dilemma. So I think, you know, I would pray, please, encourage each other to give, you know, talk about one of the, all the wonderful things that St. Max's does as a parish, that we need that money to do. Uh, you know, as I said, if you were there for that homily, this is the, if I didn't have to talk about finance as ever, I would be absolutely thrilled. But it is a reality, you know? We have to address these things, and I don't see anything else but saying, "People, your money matters.
Father, just a general comment, uh, other than the, uh, paying off the debt campaign, it seems to me with all the discussion going on right now, and the fact that we are having some problems with this campaign and getting the money, I just wonder whether or not, maybe I'm alone in this, but whether or not these particular projects fall in the category of wants as opposed to needs. It seems like we got some other problems that maybe have been partially dealt with. For instance, there's still complaints about the sound system, still complaints about the air conditioning and heating systems. Some rooms are so cold, and, especially the chapel, for instance. And maybe we need to spend our money on some smaller projects that make the experience for us better.
I, I think there's great possibility that this, you know, if you look at this and say, "Once versus need," you could have that debate, you could have that discussion. But that discussion was already had years ago. And again, already, we're talking about slightly changing the campaign. To move back from the day chapel idea is gonna require this whole sort of re, I mean, we are essentially looking to call every single donor and say, "Here's where we're going," because that's our duty. We have to tell them this. They have to know where the campaign is changing direction. To be able to change, to change so significantly to move away from that, honestly, I think that would be logistically a nightmare. Uh, you know, this was what the parish decided years ago. The surveys, parishioners said gathering space, larger meeting rooms, that those were the top two needs, um, you know, than, in all of the, the surveys. And then the expansion of the kitchen were usually ranked about number three. Now, um, so that's, that's how this whole sort of campaign was decided. As much as we would like to go back in time and, and, you know, maybe say that that wasn't the most pressing need, we really can't do that. This is the campaign as we have it. I do, I will say personally, I think the gathering space is a need, personally. I look at fellowship Sundays, and these parishioners just ducking out with their doughnuts, which is fine, but just, you know, especially these people who want to stay and talk, you know, they have no place to sit. So we're missing out on this whole fellowship part of our parish, I think. This opportunity for people to actually talk to other families, you know, and to meet with people, and sit down, and have a cup of coffee. It's just a wonderful opportunity. And plus, we could use that space for lots of other things. One of our hopes is that the north wall of the, what, with the multipurpose room, uh, right there, right there, yes? That the architects, we've been in discussion with them about that being a collapsible wall, so that we could take that whole space and use it as a gathering space. You know, basically, that's one of the, kind of the things we're looking at, so that it's, it's a little more versatile. Um, and then it would be even possibly as a reception hall, type, you know, large enough to support something like that. So I, I personally think that the, the gathering space, I, I'm, I'm excited for that part of it. I really do think that's something the parish could really use.
And I would just like to add to that. As someone who coordinates and has been dealing with ministries the, the 26 years that I've been here, the need for larger meeting space is real. Um, we have two councils and four commissions that get first dibs on that large conference room. Um, and then after that, it goes to RFY. And RFY, when you talk to Sacramento Preparation, when you talk about large group get-togethers, when you talk about whatever, they take up another majority of it. So anybody who wants to have a meeting over 15, 20 people has nowhere to go a lot of the time. And it makes it very difficult. Um, we, you know, the adult faith, the adult, I'm sorry, marriage enrichment ministry, um, they do a wine tasting. It, it serves about 100 people. This is a huge space, and, you know, you talk about operating funds. We don't need to heat a huge gym for 100 people. If we have a large meeting space, or even that fellowship area that we can knock off, we're not, suddenly, we're not heating huge gym. We're heating a little area there that accommodates that, um, that, those people, and then we can use the gym for other purposes if we need to. Um, so, uh, so, like I said, my own personal preference, my own personal opinion, based on some of the things that I've done here at the parish are, is that the need for a larger meeting space is real.
I had a question. Um, so Father, are you saying then the chapel would be postponed, or it's totally taken off the table? Or what are we saying?
I would say indefinitely postponed. Until, if, you know, I'm here for six years, or maybe 12, I don't know, whatever the Archbishop tells me, basically. So I would say that it's not a priority for me, but I want to be able to respect the, the, the idea that this has been a desire of the parish for decades, so it's, I'm just one person, you know? So I don't think that should rest fully on me. But it's not something I'm gonna push for. I, I think that there are other things, other needs of the parish that are more pressing. So, it doesn't mean that, that's why we're, we're talking about keeping it so that someday, if there's a pressing need, or there's a pastor who really thinks that it's a need, you know, then, then it can be, uh, updated, renovated, to make it that space of a day chapel.
Is there really a campaign like this to get that?
Well, I would think so, or, you know, it wouldn't be as, as serious or, or large as a, an expense, but I don't think that's what, what the campaign is saying, is, you know, originally, that the next major goal of the parish, uh, which is that challenge goal section down there, would be the renovation of the kitchen in addition to some classrooms down here. That we're not, that's, that's not anything that we're immediately going to be pursuing, certainly. You know, that once this campaign finishes, boom, let's go to this one. We're not gonna be doing that. But that was the way this was all envisioned.
Good evening, Father. Thank you very much for presenting this opportunity for all of us to come and learn about this. So, I've got, oh, so many questions. So first of all, one, um, this was presented to us in our survey, um, I'm not sure if you've actually seen it, but the question was, "Which one do you feel is a priority first? A day chapel, multipurpose room, community gathering, or the kitchen?" That was our choices, and if you felt none of the above, you didn't have a choice. So I'm really curious how many people actually responded to the survey, because I know I could not, because my selection was not on there. There were 3,200 families at the time that the campaign was going, 614 signed up, which is 20%. And I understand part of U's economics of only 20% end up supporting 80% of all of the activities, finances, and so on like that. But in a lot of ways, because of the selection limitation, it kept a lot of people also from participating. So coming back to this particular program, and I do know a lot of the people that got up on the ambo and said, "Please contribute. Here's all the reasons why." Unfortunately, I just didn't share their same vision. Um, and since day chapel was never a part of it, and if we're gonna say it was on the long-range plan from the very beginning, is the bell tower also on the plan? That's gonna be the next question.
It's in the, it's in all the questions, all that, there's about 12 to 15 different sort of perceived needs of the parish that were ranked and things, and that's one of the items.
I, I went back through all of it, all the way back to 2009, with the pulse of the parish, the path, and so on like that. But my question, a couple of them specifically are, the kitchen upgrade, could that be moved forward instead of being an additional or secondary project? And is there an opportunity for us to expand the Adoration Chapel, to make that into a day chapel? And finally, what was the originally proposed timeline for developing the plans, breaking ground, and achieving the final goal? Thank you.
The last question, I can tell you that we do have sort of this, sort of scheduled kind of timeline, and I can't remember the exact, I can tell you that the original plan, though, was by, you know, this time, November 2018, that, uh, ground would have been broken. That was the original hope. Obviously, that's not, uh, how it happened. I will say that a great discussion was had, um, in all of these different groups, and these people that I've been, people who worked in the committee, the pastoral team, all the different, Finance Council, all these different groups, Pastoral Council, sort of the Chair of Pastoral Council. And it was discussed, you know, this idea of, should we just flip the campaign, since there's a strong desire for the kitchen renovation? That was one of the options. And it was decided not to move forward with that primarily because of the budget. You know, the, the budget that we have in place to try to do what we want to do down here, we would not be able to do with that budget. So in other words, in order to do it well, to do what we really need to do in this part of the complex, that 1.2 million dollars, or whatever it was, that we just, that wouldn't cut it, basically. And so that was one of the reasons it was set. Plus, you know, I, I had input from some, several people who were friars and people who worked there, that yes, it's a pain, but it's doable. Did I answer all the questions?
Close to that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Father, thank you.
Oh, no, I got, yeah, Adoration Chapel. I will tell you that, that, that was, uh, part of my hope to pull back from the day chapel, because I don't have any, I don't, I don't think we need to expand the Adoration Chapel. I think the size of that chapel, the Blessed Sacrament Chapel, I find it perfectly suitable to have small groups of masses, or small, um, group masses in there, like, say, the youth groups going on a retreat, to have a mass in there, something like that. So my hope would be someday to address that. Uh, but I don't want to do anything, I think, there's been a lot of, "Well, let's try this, and let's try that, and let's try this with that space." And I don't want to do that. I want to, to do it, do it well, and so I'm not rushing into anything on that.
Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, two things. First of all, if back in the mid-'90s, the plan for a day chapel at the original church, was that not the existing day chapel that was converted to an Adoration Chapel now? Was that not the day chapel that was planned back in the '90s? I was in college in the late '90s, in the '97.
No, the reason I say that is because if you look back at the plans back when Father Porter was here, there was an additional chapel that went out past the sacristy, that was on a part of the plans, that we just didn't have the money for. So, um, I don't remember, so, I mean, Father Porter told me that that, that that was a Eucharistic Adoration Chapel and not a day chapel. And so, well, we used it for that, but I mean, but the original plans, like, when he, when he did the plans for the church, he added that. There was a, there was a, there was a day chapel right where we were gonna put it. I mean, in those plans. So, that's what we were going by.
And my second question would be is if, and I say if, the plan was to take the day chapel off of, uh, this project, would that then, I take it, reduce that 1.2 million obligation to something?
Um, the way that Jim told it before, and I'll give it back to you, but it, it makes it actually more feasible, because like I said, it's been two years, um, and so costs have gone up. And, and so, by, by taking out the furnishings and just maybe making it a shell and a multipurpose room, it makes it more likely that we can work within the budget that we already have.
The idea is simply this, to take 1.2 million dollars to start now, as soon as we can, with design, and to get in the top two priorities as outlined in this, these analytics that occurred a few years ago, with those top two priorities being fellowship and, uh, multipurpose. That's the idea. So, um, the idea is still to spend 1.2 million and build as much space as we can with that. So the idea is still to spend 1.2 million and build as much space as we can with that. But to use those two purposes in there. And then it was very important to folks to put it at the front door, because, you know, we have some other big spaces. You could have donuts in here, right? If we used to. It's hard to get people to take a hard right-hand turn and come on down the, down and get there. That's why it's important to be at the front door.
I just want to thank everyone who's been here long-term. I'm actually a newbie, and I'd encourage reaching out to those newbies for more outreach. Just on, not that we have lots of money, but, you know, I think, again, such a commitment, and y'all have created such an incredible parish, that anyone new is really pulled into the fellowship and the experience of not only the mass, but the family of this congregation. And so I would just encourage you to hit us all up.
We will. Although maybe not the people who just joined. That might be a little much. Hey, welcome, give us your money. That, that might be a little much. But at least six months, right?
Someone stated that there was thirty-two hundred families in our parish. Is that what it is?
Thirty-one, thirty-two, you know, that's on paper.
Okay. So if six hundred and something signed up for the five-year program, are letters going out to the rest of those people every, so often, asking them to join? Somehow, this doesn't seem, seem very fair.
I absolutely agree. But, you know, that, you know, free will, you know, the, the...
All right. So, so maybe they, at the time that it was, they weren't able to do it. But what about now, asking for them to join in?
I will tell you that right before I got here, one of the last things Father Jeff did was send out a letter, doing just that, to all the parishioners. Actually, everyone. There were three versions of this letter. To those who had pledged in our giving, to those who had pledged and aren't quite making their pledges, and to those who hadn't pledged at all. So that went, that went out June 28th, something to that, around that time. So, you know, that, that was the la, we did make that, the parish made that appeal back in June. So, and then I'm here July 1st. So now, one of the things, if you look at the, the back of your handout, that we are, that's one of our, what we hope to accomplish is encourage more parishioners to financially support the campaign, new and long-term parishioners, to reengage. And then again, I would make an appeal to you, to all of you, to reach out and say, look, this is a need for the parish. This is, this is a campaign that, you know, that the parish is striving to undertake, you know, that it would be very, very helpful to have that kind of support.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to get together tonight. Father, really appreciate it. Besides the day chapel and the plans, the biggest objection that I've run across with fellow parishioners, Respect Life Committee, Knights of Columbus, is the moving of the Rachel statue. That was an enormous project undertaken by the parish to put her in her place of, of respect there. And Father, really, I know you, you saw Bill Miller's movie on, on the moving of the, or the installation of that statue, the 3,300-pound stone that she's placed on. I just have a hard time feeling that, that if that's moved, either the stone, or the statue, or both could be damaged. And, and I would surely hate to see that happen. And I know the Respect Life Committee voted unanimously to support keeping her where she is. And the Knights of Columbus, our life committee also supports keeping her where she is.
I will tell you that that is something that, is something that I, but is a concern of mine as well. Because, well, first of, I mean, it's, well, it's a beautiful statue, first of all. Then on top of it, the prayers that are within that statue, that I believe, you know, it's just a beautiful thing. So I certainly want to do our best by the statue. I will say that, you know, this, this is, what we've been talking about kind of going forward, when we move into the design phase, there are lots of things that we're going to be looking at as possibilities. You know, we're not, this, this, the goal is gathering space, large multipurpose room. How that specifically unfolds, we're not sure yet. It's possible, and, you know, Jim actually provided a kind of a mock-up for this, that we could do something, I don't think that's going to really make sense here, but try to picture the courtyard area, that if you did essentially a fellowship room, multipurpose room, simply on this portion, and then create some, a nice courtyard area, and then this remains that front entrance, and nothing gets moved. That's a possibility. It also keeps us under that budget window if we're making that space a little bit smaller. That's a possibility. Also, I am not locked in that that's the best place if the statue does get moved. I, I don't think that, it's not very prominent. So how can we do that if it does, if it unfolds that this, just to be able to do this feasibly means that we need to move the entrance? How do we take that and have the statue remain such a wonderful and prominent part of the parish grounds? So it's not, that's not all settled. So keep reminding me to be attentive to that. And as the designs come in, we can look at all of these things. I mean, I even was talking, I mean, I even, poor Mariella, she has, she has to hear my ideas all the time. And I thought, well, what if, what if she's just right here? What if we just build around her? But that wouldn't work either, you know? I mean, it just, it's not feasible.
I have a question. I guess I'd like to go back to some of your comments, John. And I want to make sure I understand correctly what you said about the flow of money through the campaign to the parish. And then, if I understand correctly, we pay the campaign. The campaign then pays the parish everything that was collected in a six-month cycle. And then from that money, the parish has to pay the archdiocese one-sixth of the...
Right. Two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. And do I understand correctly that for the first half of this year, so the money collected January through June, we failed to meet our obligation to the archdiocese by about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars?
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. Well, then, while I applaud Father for going to the archdiocese and speaking with the Archbishop about deferring what we owe for this second half of 2018, aren't we just getting back into another debt situation? So that by, if we keep all the money and pay nothing towards what we owe to the archdiocese for the second half of this year, we owe the archdiocese somewhere near $300,000. And we've just deferred paying that. And I don't know if an analysis has been done to look at the money that's coming in on our pledges. Are, is the amount that's been collected staying steady? Is it dropping back?
Well, it's been, the last couple of payments, it's been dropping. And I have, and I don't, maybe Ruth has seen some numbers. We don't know, at least I don't know, how the pledges have been timed. Who's paying quarterly? Who's paying monthly? Who's paying annually? Who paid one payment upfront? So those first two payments were very good. And it's tailed off from that. But I think it's a function of the way people pledged, not necessarily that people aren't paying. Because we only have those twelve people who haven't paid anything. And frankly, there are thirty-seven others who have paid about half of what their pledges are. So in terms of delinquency, I think we're doing really well compared to the 614 overall pledges that were made. We can, I'm happy to ask the archdiocese if they can do some kind of projection based on the payment pattern, to see what that'll look like in, let's say, at the end of two years.
I've done that projection. And if you look at it as a whole, right? Remember, we talked about how the, it's a five-year redemption, a three-year payoff with the archdiocese. So you can see how that it's weighted a little differently, right? But they, but when you, I have the analysis, month over month over month. The important thing is where we end up at the end. And the important thing is getting to the ability to take a bridge loan. If we have ninety percent redemption, it sounds like by way of persons per, you know, we're, we're above ninety percent. I don't know about, I'm talking dollars. If we have ninety percent reduction, the plan works and we'll have a building. Right? So that's the way I'm looking at it, not on like this exact note. This dovetails into a comment that a gentleman made over here about, hey, if, you know, this year's, the Sunday collections are going down, maybe it's the same thing going on, you know, with the campaign? I don't know. But the, the thing to know, too, and, you know, and I advise construction owners on this, you can never make decisions on short-term data. I mean, you know, this takes years to develop. You have to be forward-looking with that. And I'm not saying that we're, that it's not to just look at six months. But that's not generally good practice when building construction projects. You need to look at the, look at all your data for years in advance, and then where you're going to be out. It's long-range planning. Let me give you an example. So at the end of last year, we had major surpluses. And then this stuff happened, and the church, you know, I think, the church took some hits, right? But it's going to bounce right back. I mean, it does every time. Look at history, right? This is a, this is a rough time for the church. There's been lots of homilies about it. And that's probably, our money is probably trending the same way. But it's going to bounce back. And if you don't move forward and grow your, your parish per what your data says you need, you're going to be way behind in two years when your project could have started, you know? So that, that's why I'm trying to encourage people to look forward and, and, and know that, that the church is going to prevail against, you know, the worldwide church against us. So everybody's experiencing the same thing. But it'll prevail, and we'll be right there.
Okay. Thank you again, Father, and this panel. I'm, I think we are blessed that the people that we have in office that do these things for us and, and pay attention to where our money is going. And thank you to all the people who showed up tonight, because obviously, they're interested. They want to know too. One of my questions was about the payment, because I think that some people may have made a one-time payment at the very beginning, whether it was fifty bucks or $5,000. And so we don't know that, you know, that would taper off, because like you said, in the first few payments, people, you know, we got a lot of money. But the question too, when we say there's only 614 families who have pledged, that is such a, and we talk about twenty percent does everything for the eighty percent. But if those other eighty percent were really, if they did just a little, they don't have to commit thousands of dollars. And same way with the people that are here. Everybody, I'm assuming, you know, this is an assumption, that the people here have pledged, have put money in. They care about this parish, and so do you. And, and I know you're new to our parish, but I think that we are welcoming and trying to work with you, and you're working with us. But the question, to, to reach out to those other 2,400 families and almost, and I hate to plead, but, you know, to let them know that just a little bit, just a little increase. And then I was curious about the attendance. Is the attendance down at masses? It looks like it to me, but I, I don't have a...
According to the, you know, they do in the October, I don't know if you're familiar with the October count. Every year, parishes do what they call the October count. And compared to the averages from last year, I don't remember the exact number. It was, was fifty people? It was sixty people down overall? So not a significant drop. You know, so that was nice to see for me.
Thank you, Father, for doing this. Really appreciate you being open. I, I just want to comment, if, if you do take the day chapel out and move it over, there is a huge saving in, in cutting out those entrances to the design build. And also, I'm, I'm trying to build an eight-million-dollar project for four years. And what architects like to do is they, they like to use a pie-in-the-sky number, because that's what they get paid off of in their contract. So if a financial pro forma is completed in a proper way, I think you'll probably be surprised with those changes, what, what we'd be capable of doing. And someone should be able to do that, I would think. So, yeah. Well, you have to have a finance guy. Thank you.
We have, we have a, we have a financial plan. We need money in hand. And we don't have it. Until as of Friday, we've got some, we've got some that's coming in. And that plan is just enough to make it work, to kickstart it. So yes, we have a financial plan, but you can't do anything without money, right?
I do have a question. The cost of money versus the cost of construction. So Father, great job, the Archbishop. You must have arm-wrestled him. You won, great. But my concern is, okay, we get that money, we put concrete in the ground, we put girders up, all of a sudden, it stops, and we all sit there and watch the girders rust for a long time. That's, that's a concern. So would it be wise to maybe look at borrowing money and, and do it now and save the cost of waiting for the construction? If it goes up six percent a year, maybe it's wiser. I don't know the cost of a loan, but let's say we get three percent. But if it's costing us six percent to wait, maybe it's wiser to take a small-term loan out and, and drive the price down in construction. And that way, we're not sitting there watching girders rust.
Good plan. The archdiocese's policy is that you cannot do that bridge loan until you have fifty percent of your funds. That's, as soon as that fifty percent benchmark is met, then you can get out that loan to complete it. That's, the reason for that is, going back years, it was, this policy was changed, I think it's the same time it changed, this whole thing was about maybe ten years ago. Because, because of these loans, the archdiocese was about, was it 20 million or 90 million? I can't remember the number. There is about 20 to 90 mil, I can't remember the exact number, that parish is owed to the archdiocese through these loans, through this loan program, that just the archdiocese had to assume. And so it was a nightmare for parishes, because every parish's assessment that they had to go up. And so the archdiocese said, this can't continue the way it was. So that's why the, the policy was changed.
Are we borrowing the money then from the archdiocese?
No. Once we hit that fifty percent, then we, we simply go to banks and, you know, the archdi, there are banks that are very church-friendly. So that, those are the ones that, through the, with the archdiocese's cooperation, we'll, we'll seek those banks to get that.
Those banks are much friendlier than the archdiocese bank.
So the, to put some real numbers to your question, the, you say, when we're going to have $600,000? Right now, if we had a ninety percent redemption rate, the best we can project, Q3 next year, we'll have $600,000 in hand, and we'll be able to bridge, which also happens to be about the time that we would want to start construction anyway, with this, with this deferment that just happened on Friday. So this deferment, that money, and then we owe one in July next year, and then that, this one that's deferred, it's deferred until later, after we have the $600,000 in hand, Q3 next year. Q, it's going to take until Q3 next year to have a design and have the, and have it permitted. The money that's deferred is more than enough money to pay for that design in the procurement process, or the design in the permitting process. So that, with this, with this move that was made, and it wasn't a guess, it was, if we make this move, our financial plan says that we can start now, basically. So it was very, it was a very good thing that happened. But we still need the pledges to come in. We're still working on projections. That's the best we can do right now. We don't have all that money in hand. And if we get out in Q3, we don't have 600,000? I don't know. We'll figure out something different, I guess. But, or, but we have to project based on the data we have now. And our, and our, that was, that is exactly what our financial plan says. If we were allowed to take a loan, we would have. That was our, that was the first suggestion, and it literally, the archdiocese just simply will not allow that, to have fifty percent in hand.
I think that one of the things you need to take into consideration is that this is a, a parish where we have a lot of turnover. And it just makes sense that a lot of the people who made pledges have moved on to another church to build. And we need to replace them if we want to continue to keep the rate of giving up.
of giving up. And that means you still have to go back to the people who took their place in our community.
All right. I think we have, and one more question here, but I would like to wrap up. Oh, sorry, we'll get to you, sorry.
Hi, Father Jim. Just a quick question on the debt payoff. I'm not understanding the talk we're having now about taking on more debt, because what I heard was, the overwhelming drive by the parish was to be debt-free and pay off debt. So my question is, whatever comes in on pledges will come in. We can do things to hopefully get more people and get more. We may tail off, we don't know. What we do have control over, though, is construction costs. Is the overwhelming principle for construction, to be able to do it in increments that will allow us to stay debt-free, and then postpone even finishing off other things besides the chapel, if you will, so that when we're done here, we guarantee ourselves that we're debt-free, which is what the parish overwhelmingly wanted? And we don't end up with rusting girders, because we have to stop in the middle? But will the under, overwhelming principle that drives construction be that it's in increments that we can stop or start up higher, so that we ensure ourselves that we're debt-free at the end?
There, this project cannot be incremented without rusting girders. But the end of the campaign is December 2020, okay? If we start, if we started design in January, we'd have our expansion in, let's say, the Q3 next year, or in 2020, sorry. So those two dates are like, they're aligning, right? End of the year, 2020, Q3, 2020, you know? Right now, we're talking in quarters, right? So if we have 90% redemption, and we can endeavor to keep the building within a 1.2 and change budget, then it will be, have zero debt at the end of it. Now, if the pledges drop, you know, drop way off, it doesn't work, right? The other thing is, it's not a long-term loan, it's a bridge. It's, I would say like, let me give you an idea of what the maximum amount of the loan would be. So you wouldn't take a loan for 1.2 million, right? Because you already have some cash flow coming in, we have, we're gonna have some cash in the bank, and then you have, we know what the incremental cost is, I know what it is today, projected, right? What this was gonna cost every month until 2020. So that max kind of deficit on your cash position, probably around $300,000 or $400,000, max. It'll, will be in the black, and then in the red, and then kind of, you know, red, you know, right out, down to zero. That's how you do it, right? You have to, you have to have cash on hand in order to bridge that to where you have zero. So there is a, and in fact, the archdiocese won't let you take, the requirements quite literally are, 50% cash in hand for your projected total program budget, and then the other 50% in redemptions over a five-year period. The end of the five-year period is December 2020, so it nets out to zero. Let's answer your question, kind of? Okay.
Thank you for the explanation of how this project is progressing. I know we've been making our payments that we've pledged over the five years, and we've been kind of wondering, when are we breaking ground? When are we breaking ground? And when it was announced that St. Max paid off its debt completely, we knew that was a chunk. So we figured, well, the money went to pay the debt. And it only mathematically makes sense that we haven't broken ground, when you look at what we've accomplished with the debt. Now, it was not clear, as you said, between you and the archdiocese, about how the payments were going to proceed, that they were getting their share first, and then after their, their payments were satisfied, then we could start collecting. So that's a very understandable situation, that, that's why we have not broken ground. But I just wanted to make sure, going forward, since there was this agreement about deferred payments, and last time, everything was verbal, and this one's understanding, and that one's understanding, are these deferred payments, are they deferred, like, are they gonna be looking for double payments in six months? Or are they deferred for five, you know, after the five-year period? Or is it, is it agreed upon and understood by all parties, not just a verbal, "Yeah, yeah, you can defer it," as to what we will owe to them? Will they be looking for $286,000 payments, times two, in six months, or how? Is it clear? So there's no more...
Yes. It just gets pushed back. That's, if, think of it that way. We get this six-month window, basically. And I actually said to the archbishop, "Can I get that in writing?" And so he's, and he, actually, he was ahead of me. He said, "Absolutely, I have this form to do." And I will tell you, I talked to him, I was off the phone by 10:30 in the morning. By 4 o'clock, when I got, I got two calls from the CFO for the archdiocese Friday afternoon to assure me that this is what was gonna be done. Then I got a call from another person from the archdiocese telling me, and so they had already, and yesterday, when Bishop Binzer here was here for confirmations, he said, "It was all the buzz in the office, yes, on Friday." So it is actually, the letter, the formal letter is on its way, and it's being sent to the campaign, the company who handles all of this. And I just wanted to recognize that the six-month window, the $286,000 payments that we've been making, any money that goes over that has flowed back to the parish. That's how we were able to pay the debt off. That's where that money came from.
Right.
So what we're hoping is, that's the wrong screen. See, right now, we have, in this timeframe, we have, we have $205,000 right now, that has been pledged, has been paid to the campaign in this timeframe. So as I said, any money that we collect before December 31st comes straight to us. Then, then in the next six-month period, that money will be up to 286,000. If we reach that, that will go to the archdiocese for the One Faith, One Hope, One Love campaign. Anything over that flows back. So...
Unless there's any more additional roof leaks.
Right. Where we had that 15, if we don't make it, then we don't get anything back.
Right.
The pledges, that's what happened with that 15,000 in that time up to July 1st of this past year.
I thought there was a separate, a separate fund for roof, for the roof and the maintenance of the roof and all that.
There is. That's not a part of the campaign.
Right, right. But I mean, there was, someone asked, you know, that...
That's a whole, there's an envelope, there's a whole sort of set for the, what is it, raise the roof? That's an entirely different...
But that's just for an entirely new roof? That's not for the, the maintenance things that were done?
Quite honestly, I haven't looked at that at all, so. That's Ruth's question.
Okay. All right. Because there was some mention that, you know, since the debt has been paid...
For the new roof.
Yeah. Since the debt, the debt had all been paid, they said, "What had, where has the money been going?" And he said, "Operational expenses such as roof leaks, air conditioning repairs, stuff like that." So that's not a separate fund, that's just operational expense?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you. I just, with a couple of things before we leave, I do think we should be, as a parish, you should be very proud of the accomplishments, really. Because, I mean, on that handout there, the debt was paid off, but look at how much has been paid already to the archdiocese, that, you know, we're so close to fulfilling that end of the campaign. That's a wonderful thing. And 52% of all the pledges have already been fulfilled. So that's a great thing. So I know it seems sort of bleak, because we're kind of in this unknown stage, where we're sort of waiting to get things moving, but it's really not bleak. It's moving in the right direction, it just takes time. And then if you turn that paper over, this is where we're moving. We want to meet those needs of the parish while adapting to the financial realities as we move ahead and, you know, with whatever comes our way. But we also want to make sure, and this is where I need your help, to communicate and celebrate what we've done so far, and then you can help clarify, because there's a lot of confusion out there about how this, and why hasn't this happened? So you now armed with this knowledge, hopefully you can help to do that. Encourage more parishioners. There are pledge cards in the back, on the table in the back there. So you can, if you have not pledged, please pick one up. If you know somebody who may be interested, please take some and pass them to your friends and family. Then what we want to do is to be able to meet those obligations in a timely fashion, so we can get this project really started, the construction really underway. Because then, usually what happens is then people are like, "Ooh, I want to contribute to that. I want to help make that wonderful. I want to..." So that's where that money to fill in that shell will come from. It's, it's just, people are so generous, it's amazing. So I'm not worried personally, because I've done other projects, not the scale, but it's amazing. People want to give, they're very generous, so we're looking towards that. So there in the back there, there's information how you can help as well, and plus some contact information. Ruth, would you stand up, please, so everybody knows who you are, our business manager? Round of applause for Ruth. I'm sure that anybody on the panel, if they have any, if you have any questions, they'd be more than happy to talk to you afterwards. So I would like to simply end with prayer.
If anybody wants to help us make phone calls...
That we do need people to make phone calls to those 614 households slash individuals to let them know if they're not here tonight, so that, you know, where we're headed. So if you would please stand and join me in praying the renewal prayer for our parish. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. O God, you filled your priest and martyr, St. Maximilian Kolbe, with resilient zeal for the faith and profound love of neighbor. Grant that we who claim him as patron may be renewed by his witness in our love for the Eucharist, in our desire to strengthen our faith, in our love for each other, and in our service to all. We make our prayer to you, Father, through the intercession of Mary Immaculate, in the Holy Spirit, through Christ our Lord, amen. St. Maximilian Kolbe. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you very much.